Page set of plans, specifically sheets V1, V2, and V3, prepared by RDS Architects with the last revision date of May 14, 2020. I tried to set forth in my letter the changes to the plan. It include a very slight change in the side yard setback on the right side of the home. A slight reduction in the width of the home as well to accommodate the resolution of a survey discrepancy that was raised during the course of litigation. But the major change was a reduction in the size of the master bedroom on the second floor. Earlier, it extended essentially over a porch on the rear side of the dwelling. That master bedroom was reduced in size so as to be a coincident with the master bathroom was on the second floor as well. According to Mr. Schlick's plan, the gross building area within the first 140 feet of the lot was reduced from 37.3% of that lot area to 35.9% of that lot area. The settlement agreement contains some other terms with respect to the design of the home that aren't necessarily, I think, relevant or necessarily of importance to the board, but they were indeed part of and incorporated into the revised plan. Our position and my clients come before the board this evening, asking that the board approve the revised plan. It has been agreed upon by the individual parties to the litigation. It does indeed resolve the litigation, make it unnecessary for Mr. Whitaker and the board to participate further, and indeed reduces the quantum of the variances that were granted by the board. Some of the variances didn't change very much, but the major change was the gross building area variance. And we think that, my clients certainly think that the settlement that was reached with the assistance again of Judge Cantillo was fair and reasonable. We come before the board this evening, asking that the board approve the revised plan so that this project can proceed. I did have been in close consultation with Mr. Englema with respect to this hearing. The May 15 letter that I wrote to the board was the subject of discussion between me and him. So I believe I'm satisfied that my letter and the facts set forth therein accurately set forth the status of this matter as it is today. The approval of the board of the revised plan pursuant to this Whispering Woods hearing is one of the terms of the settlement. And I should note for the record, although I'm sure you know this, I did notice and publish as per the requirements of the municipal land use law for this evening's hearing, and I provided Ms. Wondergem with a copy of my certification of publication and service earlier today. So I don't think I really have to say much more than that, quite honestly. This is the final step in what turned out to be a fairly long saga. I think all parties, I won't speak for Mr. Englema, he can certainly speak for himself, but I think all parties are satisfied with the resolution. This will bring the matter to an end and enable the project to proceed. And I would ask the board to approve the revised plan as it has been submitted.
For board members' consideration, we first, Jane, tell us who is eligible to vote on this?
Greg and Gary.
Okay. And just for an overview, Mr. Rutherford stated the letter was May 15, 2019. It's 2020, of course, so the record's clear.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Well, I wish it was May of 2019, maybe. But in any event, the approach on this is that, as I've told board members in the past, when a person is granted variance relief, and later on, they are in a situation where they do something less than what you approved. At that point, they basically have an ability to do less than what was approved. They obviously could never do more than what was approved. Mr. Rutherford's letter is excellent in outlining the situation and the modifications made. Bottom line is, what is now been approved between the two parties is correct in that the board is not a although a party to the lawsuit, not a party to the settlement because it didn't involve the board, we had no interest in it from my perspective since they were not seeking any new variance or seeking to expand or increase the variance relief they previously received. So on the basis of that, it would be appropriate to finalize the litigation by affirming under this Whispering Woods scenario the plans that are dated May 14 of 2020. An appropriate resolution would be done for adoption. I'm hopeful to get a resolution done for you to adopt at our next June meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah. Thank you, Whitaker.
Need someone to move it.
Move to approve.
And I will second it.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
That's what we need. This matter is included.
Thank you all very much, and good evening. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we're going to move on to new business. We're going to, well, first of all, is the Ludwig party here. So I want to make sure we don't start a matter if we don't have attendance.
Yes, Julie Ludwig and Siomara Paredes should be on.
I'm adding them right now. What's the other name? Is she on there?
There she is, okay. And do they have the ability to speak? I see they're muted, but is that on their chair?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Hi, good evening. This is-
Ludwig, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Okay. Good evening. This is Siomara Paredes. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you. I just want to confirm before I open the matter that Ms. Ludwig can hear.
I can hear, thank you.
All right, perfect. So this is now the matter of Julie Ludwig. It's an application for a roof alteration which resulted in a side yard setback of 13.1 feet, where 16.78 feet is required at 288 Richards Road, block 1105, lot 16 in an R1 zone. This matter has been carried from May 12, 2020 without further notice. Good evening.
Good evening. This is Siomara Paredes, the architect for the Ludwig residence. We are in front of the board tonight for a roof alteration to an existing non-conforming house to the side yard.
Very good. I think that-
Let's stop right there.
Let's have Mr. Whitaker swear you guys on.
If you would raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State for the record your full name and address.
Siomara Paredes, S-I-O-M-A-R-A, Paredes, P-A-R-E-D-E-S.
And your business address?
240 Rock Road, Glen Rock, New Jersey.
Ms. Paredes has been previously qualified as an expert witness in the field of architecture, so unless there's any questions by members of the board or members of the public, she can be so qualified for that purpose this evening. Jane, we don't see any objection or any questions, so at that point, Paredes can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. So we are in front of the board tonight for a roof alteration to an existing non-conforming house to the side yard. We're proposing a renovation, not an addition whatsoever, and we're maintaining the existing footprint of the house. The house is non-conforming on the right side, where the required setback is 16.78, and the existing setback is 13.1. That is remaining because all we're doing is altering the roof. So if we go to the sheet number two, where the floor plan is, is behind the dining room. There is an awkward space that is approximately eight by six-six and is approximately two foot six below the first floor elevation. This is a very awkward space. And we are renovating, we're proposing to renovate the kitchen, and the owner wants to have a better use of this awkward space by reclaiming it as part of the kitchen and using it as a walking pantry. In order to do that, we need to raise the floor to make it match with the existing floor of the kitchen or the first floor floor. Therefore, we need to modify the roof to make it for the head height requirements and to having a ceiling of eight feet in height to match the existing first floor. Please notice that we're maintaining the existing sidewall of the house, the wall that is non-conforming. But what we're proposing is to raise it in height to make, we're raising it four feet in height to make the head height that is required and is necessary. So we have a hardship. This is a non-conforming house to the side setback, and we're not worsening it. We are just modifying the roof and make the sidewall four foot higher to make the head height. So if we go to the elevations, that is the next sheet, when we look at this right side elevation, that illustrates the line of the existing roof with the dash line. And you can see where it says dining room ceiling, that's the existing dining room ceiling. And then you see the line of the roof where the ridge is about four feet from the front wall of the house. And it goes down after that, continues going down all the way to the back. And in the rear is when you see how much lower the roof is actually three to four feet lower than the existing roof of the kitchen. So that's what we're asking to do to add about four feet in height and raise the roof. The ridge, the new ridge now will be more toward the center of the volume. So the volume will look more balanced, enhancing the aesthetics of the right side elevation. If we look at the rear elevation, that is the elevation above it, you can see on the left side we're raising the roof and it's going to be one foot higher than the existing roof of the kitchen, that is where the door is. So we're raising it one foot higher than the existing roof to avoid a conflict of roofs. And but that way, we can get the eight-foot ceiling. There is no water problems, no conflict with existing roofs. And the building height, if you notice, is only 16 feet nine inches, where the maximum height is 30 feet. The existing, the building height of the house is 25 feet two inches. So the proposed alteration is complies with all the other requirements of Zone R1. And the only thing we have is the side setback, which we're keeping. And so in summary, we are doing mainly an interior renovation. Well, a renovation. No additions are proposed. The hardship is the non-conforming, existing non-conforming right side. There is an existing space that is three feet lower than the first floor elevation. And we are asking to, we want to match the existing floor and asking for a variance for the modification of the roof and extending the sidewall four feet. The proposed modification of the roof will enhance the aesthetics of the side elevation, making it more balanced and would allow an efficient use of the space that will be making sense. So in conclusion, I believe this roof alteration is a simple project that represents no detriment to the neighbors. It would not impair the intent of the ordinance. And the proposed alteration will support the goal of maintaining and updating homes in the area, and the homeowner will be able to use their property efficiently. So I respectfully encourage the board to vote in favor of this variance. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Paredes. So now's the time for board questions. As we said in our last meeting, I think the best way to do it is just to go down the list. I'm just going to go clockwise. Greg, you're the first one on my screen. Any questions for either the homeowner or the architect?
Just for the architect, one quick question. I just want to confirm that, you know, you're not exacerbating any of the pre-existing conditions, building out any, it's just looking at extending the roof line up a couple of feet, and that's all.
Yes, that's correct. I'm raising the wall as a result of the modification of the roof to make the the ceiling height to match with the existing, which is eight feet. But I'm not going any further from the footprint of the house. That we are maintaining. And the line of the sidewall, that is the non-conforming sidewall, we're maintaining as well. We're just raising it as is necessary.
Great, thank you. That was my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next on my screen, Gary, Gary Negrits, any questions?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand this first floor drawing. It's the first floor plan on, shows the dining room, shows an existing ceiling plate, shows, I don't know, looks like a walk-in pantry.
Yes.
And then a but dotted in, running from the exterior wall through the word butler, dotted line like there's a wall there or was a wall. I'm trying to figure out what that is.
That is the two risers going down to this awkward space. So the two lines that you see that seems like it's a wall is the two risers that are existing now, we're removing. And that little space is the space I was saying that is awkward, that is eight, approximately eight by six-six. So it's like a hole that is two and a half or three feet below the first floor. So but the two lines that you see are the two risers to go down. But the existing exterior wall is what you see that is in white behind, that makes the corner of the walking pantry.
I guess my question is, now, that couple of feet down that you're talking about would be the mud slab that's shown on the foundation drawing?
Yes.
So if that was a mud slab, it would seem that that real estate was not part of the, and with the ceiling height of, I don't know, four feet, it doesn't sound to me like it was in the usable space calculation.
Yes, it was. Because this slab, the slab is two and a half feet below, but the ceiling height in that little hole is seven foot three. So it seems like they used that, the previous owner, used that as an office. But it is livable space. If you look at the side elevation, the right side elevation, you can see the line of the roof coming down. And the floor is, if you scale it, unfortunately, I didn't indicate it, but the ceiling height of that little lower space is seven foot three. So we are not creating more livable space. The space is there already. What we're doing is making the space efficient. So you don't have to go down, right now, you have to go down two risers to that awkward space that ends up being kind of disconnected from the first floor. It is livable space. Trust me, it's livable space.
As long as it's in the calculation, I don't care.
Yes, it's in the calculation, before and after.
Okay.
Trust me, Gary.
Next.
Thank you.
So I got- Sorry, I was on mute. Thanks, Gary. Diana, any questions?
Nope, I'm all set.
All right, thank you. Dan?
No, I understand. Thank you. No questions.
All right. So Matthew, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, so are there any questions by the public? Does anyone dialed in on the Ludwig matter? And if any questions for either the architect or the applicant, now is the time? Raising a hand or trying to chat or trying to make themselves known?
I don't see anyone.
Now, any members of the public have any comments regarding this matter? Any comments? Dylan, then?
Still none.
All right, Ms. Paredes, do you have any additional testimony? Or do you want to sum up and we can deliberate?
Sure. This is what I consider a very small project where we're basically maintaining the front view is maintained. And we're not adding any livable space. We're not being, we're not increasing the GBA. We're not increasing the building coverage. All we're doing is modifying the roof. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paredes. The hearing is now closed, and we could entertain deliberation or a motion.
I would make a motion if people are okay.
Please, go for it.
I'd make a motion to accept as presented with the change in the roof line being a de minimis change to what's there and not exacerbating any pre-existing condition. It's just the height of that rear section of the dining room. That's it.
Good. Do we have a second?
A second?
Let's see, no, Dan?
Sure.
I defer if necessary.
Okay. Greg Brown?
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Diana Rule?
Yes.
Matthew Bandow?
Yes.
Daniel Proman?
Yes.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Ludwig, you are approved. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Very much. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for being with us. All right, Dylan, can you see if Justin and Anna Manger are on?
They are. Justin is.
And I believe Joseph Architect would be-
Mr. Bruno is on as well?
All right, let me add them in. And Justin Architect.
Hello, Anna Manger, homeowner.
And Joe Bruno, the architect. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, great. This is the matter of Justin and Anna Manger, an application to construct a second floor addition which will result in a front yard setback of 25 feet, where 40 is required, and a distance from the second floor overhang to the garage of three feet, where 12 feet is required in 590 Cliff Street, block 1509, lot 3, in R2 zone. This matter has been carried from May 12, 2020 without further notice. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can everybody hear me? Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bruno, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, give your full name and your business address.
Yes, be happy to. My first name, Joseph, last name was Bruno, B-R-U-N-O, 29 Pascac Road, Park Ridge, New Jersey.
Mr. Bruno has been previously qualified as an expert witness before the board in the field of architecture, so unless there's questions from members of the public or members of the board this evening, Mr. Bruno could be qualified in that field and proceed with rendering a professional opinion in the field. Are there any questions? Dylan, do you see anyone?
No.
Okay. At that point, he's so qualified, he can proceed.
Yeah, I think Mr. Manger would like to say a few things. Would like to be sworn in because he's got something to say before I make my presentation, if that's okay.
Okay, Mr. Manger, if you would raise your right hand.
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you all for your time. I just wanted to give a quick background before Joe gets into the details. My wife and I moved here to Ridgewood three years ago, just about this time, May 2017. Looks like we moved at the right time, considering what's happened since. We were in the city. And we got a small fixer-upper here, 590 Cliff Street. And we had a daughter at the time. She's now four. Last year, we had a son. He's now one. And the 951 square feet, I think it was, when we bought it, is not enough for our growing family. And so we're just looking to keep the existing footprint, right? The first floor footprint won't change at all, but we do need some more space, and so we're looking to build a second floor. And we think this is a reasonable request will, you know, fit the other houses on the street. In fact, the two houses, if you're looking at our house to the right, were all built in, I guess, post-World War II, 1949 is our house. They had the same footprint, and those two houses have second floors. We're right in from First Street, the third house in Ridgewood, next to Ho-Ho Kus. And I just wanted to let you know the background. Any questions or comments? I'm here, but I'll let Joe do the details. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. I'd like to just go through the the photo exhibit that I prepared with the board. I believe you all have it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So photograph number one, and these photographs were all taken by me on May 4 of this year. Photograph number one is a front elevation view of the subject residence taken from Cliff Street. And Mr. Manger is there in the doorway. Photograph number two is a view looking west down the down the Manger's driveway towards the existing detached garage. Photograph number three is the- Photograph number three is the rear elevation view of the, uh, subject residence taken from the backyard. Now, the, uh, the backyard does slope up quite a bit and I'm at a higher elevation looking down upon the house. That's why you see, uh, more of the roof than you would normally see on a photograph of a house. Photograph number four is a front elevation view of the, um, subject property, um, uh, of the, uh, the, um, property located to the, um, the north of the subject property. I apologize for the stumble there. That's on lot number two. Number, photograph number five is the, uh, view looking eastward across Cliff Street from the subject property. Lot 13 is the, is to the left of the photo. Lot 12 was to the right of the photo. And photograph number six is the front elevation view of the property located to the south of, south of the subject property, which is on lot four. We are requesting, um, two variances. Uh, one is for the front yard setback. As you can see on the, um, schematic site plan that I prepared, that the existing, um, front yard setback with residence was built is 25 feet and the zoning requirement for front yard setback is 40 feet. Uh, the other, um, the other variance item that we're requesting is the, is the distance to the, to the garage, the detached garage. We are proposing, uh, three feet and right now the three feet at the second floor level. The first floor level does not change. And, um, at present, it's five feet. I have a tabulation in the lower left-hand corner of the, uh, drawing sheet number one, which indicates that the, um, that the, the existing average front yard setback, uh, between lots, uh, the, between 560 Cliff Street up to and including 598 Cliff Street is 20.11 feet. So we are, we are, um, we are at 25 as our proposal. So we are about 4.89 feet further back than the, the average on that side of the street. If you look on my, um, on my, uh, the floor plan drawings, uh, on, uh, sheet number one, you'll see that, that in the front, the, um, on the right-hand side, that, that area, for the proposed addition is right over the top of that, that existing covered porch that's depicted at the first floor plan. And then you'll see the, um, in back of the house, the dash line, um, which is noted as edge of proposed new second floor overhang. So we're not coming any closer to the street than the house is at, at present. And, um, we're, um, you know, in building the second floor of the house, we are consistent with the two houses that are, um, immediately to the north as well as to the, um, the house immediately across the street. I'd like to, um, uh, to bring your board's attention to drawing sheet number two, which has the elevations of the, um, of the house. And, um, the, if you look at the east elevation or the front, where we're proposing to maintain the existing brick and then to do a, um, shake style vinyl siding at the, at the second floor as well as the first floor where the, on the left-hand side, which is where that little existing mudroom entrance to the kitchen is. Do any board members have questions at this point in time?
Okay, so we'll, we'll go, uh, again in order. But we'll, so we'll go counterclockwise. We'll start with Matthew. Any questions?
Yeah. The, the attic, um, is that a pull-down staircase?
The, yeah, the, uh, the attic will be, will be accessed with a pull-down staircase and would strictly be for, um, for storage and the, um, air conditioning equipment for the, uh, for the second floor.
Okay. No further questions as of right now.
Okay, Dan, Dan Promin, any questions?
Uh, I understand, um, the application. I don't have any questions for the applicant or the architect.
All right, thanks. Diane, no?
I do have a question. Um, it appears that the second floor is cantilevered over the back, thus causing more of an issue with the garage?
We, uh, we, we did that to gain the, uh, the necessary space for the, um, for the, for the bedrooms, but, um, in, um, so we, uh, is that, uh, the, the, um, the, the roof of the garage slopes away from, from where the house is. So we're not coming on top of the roof. Is that your question?
No, no. I mean, you, you're asking for a variance to be instead of 12 feet, you're asking for three. And my, when I was, when you were first discussing, you were saying you're staying in the same footprint. I assumed that you were going straight up all around. But, but you're right now, you might, instead of being, um, three feet from the garage, your existing house, you're probably six or eight feet from the garage existing.
It's five at the first floor. Mr. Manger had stated that the first floor footprint wouldn't be changing.
Okay, no, I'm just trying to understand.
Understood, yep.
So you're exacerbating a pre-existing condition. It's just, so I want to understand properly. I, I guess when you were talking about, um, if you went further over the, I'm looking at, at, I guess zoning, I don't even know which one I'm looking at at this point, the foot, the, the plans, the interior design plans. And it appears that the second floor on the, the second floor plan doesn't go out as far in the front, but goes farther in the back?
Uh, right. Because what I wanted to do, uh, was to create a little bit of, a little, little bit of a break in the front, in, in the front elevation, so, so that we wouldn't have a, um, a vertical sheer wall, you know, the entire width of the, um, of the house, particularly since we were asking for the, the variance relief for the front yard setback. Uh, we, we wanted to be very.
Okay.
Well, of the, of the streetscape at that point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Gary? Any questions?
No.
All right. And then finally, Greg, any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. And actually, I don't have any questions either. Cause I, I have the only question, uh, on it was the one Diana had regarding the second floor, uh, but you cleared it up for me. Any, anything else, Mr. Mr. Bruno?
Uh, I would just respectfully request that the board look favorably on, on the application because the, um, the, the house is very, is, is very small. As you can see, the, um, the, on the first floor plan, you know, we've got a kitchen. What's marked as a den is actually right now the master bedroom. We have the living room, dining room. Uh, we've got a, a, a full bath on the first floor. And then that, what I list as the guest bedroom in the back right corner is the, uh, is, uh, is actually their, their daughter's bedroom. And we, we're trying, we, I, I did look in the beginning at creating a, uh, one-story addition on the back of the house to, to support everything, but it would have looked like a, in order to, to get the, the proper amount of, of, um, of space, it, it would essentially have been a railroad boxcar that would have, uh, that, that would have taken up a lot of space in the backyard and would have been built into the side of the hill. So from, from an architectural standpoint, it made no, no sense to do that as well as from a, um, you know, a, a utilization of the land. We wanted to, uh, we, we wanted to maintain as much, as much of the green space as we possibly could.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public who have any questions for either the applicant or the architect? Dylan, do you see him?
Uh, not showing anybody.
And, uh.
I see Diana raising her hand. Oh, Diana's raising her hand.
I raised it. Um, I just got a question for the architect on photo number three. I'm just trying to envision the three feet from the garage. At what height is the three feet from the garage? Look at photo number three.
Right, I am, yes.
I'm trying to envision, so when you're walking from the driveway to your backyard, at eight feet, you're still five feet apart?
At the, at the, uh, the, there is no change to the, uh, to the distance between the two structures at the first floor level. The, the, um, the, 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 the editing coachment is strictly at the second floor.
So, but when you're saying three feet, the way, if you look at the garage roof, it slopes away.
Correct.
So if the garage roof went straight up and the house came straight up, where?
It would be three feet, the, the, the three foot is if you, you projected two vertical lines of measure between the two.
Okay, so there is no overhang of roofs?
No. No, not, not at all. If you were to, if, if you were to, to, um, to take a vertical line and drop it down from the, um, from the, I guess that would be the southwest corner of the second floor addition. And if you were to extend that line till it intersected with the grade or the ground and then measured to the, then, then measured to the, um, the, the corner of the garage at the ground level, that's where you'd have the three feet, but you wouldn't perceive it since it's, it's about, um, nine and, about nine and a half to 10 feet above your head is where the bottom of the second floor, uh, second floor overhang is.
But I guess my question also is, are you measuring from where the roof of the garage comes out?
No.
Or the wall of the garage?
The wall of the garage. The wall of the garage and the wall of the house.
So that's, that's my concern. So the roof, the roof overhangs another foot of the garage.
Roof overhang, better foot, yes.
And I'm looking, I gotta look, I'm sorry, slipping back and forth between.
No, no, it's fine, yep.
All right. And then there's a flat wall for the house. So you're really at some point only two feet apart.
The, if you go to the roof overhangs, yes. But the roof overhang of the garage is, is about, um, roof overhang to the garage, of the garage is about nine feet below the roof overhang at the second.
Yes, yeah. So what I'm saying, the, the roof overhang of the ha, of the garage to where the house is going to be will be two feet or, but at different heights.
Right. If you projected a vertical line, it would be two.
Okay, I'm just trying to visualize that.
Right. Well, what I'd like to do is, if you don't mind, just ask a pointed question. Is this, is this something that? Is, i- i- is this something that is particularly difficult for you, uh, you as a, um, you maybe as an individual or the other, other board members to, um, to accept? Since it's being questioned, I always like to be open with board members and.
No, I, I, I was concerned more that the walkway between, for me personally, between the house and the garage still is, remains at five feet. That to me is.
Walkway is going to remain at, at the same dimension as it is today.
It's just there'll be that overhang.
It'll just be essentially an overhang, yes.
I don't know if anybody else has an issue. I, like I said, to me, as long as it stayed the, at the existing width.
At the grade level.
Yes.
Yes, oh yeah. There, there, there are no changes may, uh, proposed at the, at, at the grade level. Cause the, cause right now, if you, if you see the, um, if you look, uh, let's see, at photograph number, and, and photograph number two, you're going to see three steps coming out of the, um, of that little, that, that little covered porch.
Yes.
So the, and we have an eight-foot ceiling height at the first floor. So if you take the eight-foot ceiling height at the, at the first floor, add the two feet to it, that would mean that the overhang is at 10 feet above the ground. And if you go to the, if you look at the garage, that door is, um, from.
Nine and eight.
Well, that door, I think to the underside of the, the eve is like seven and a half feet.
Yeah.
Okay, so, and, and I'm probably being a little generous, but let's, like, like, let's call it seven and a half. So we're looking at, there, there's a 30-inch vertical differential between the underside of the, of the, uh, soffit, if you will, of the floor overhang and the underside of the, um, and, and the underside of the, um, the eve. So, so you wouldn't, there is no, there is, there is no reduction of space at the first floor level.
Okay.
What we do recognize is that it, it is at the upper level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? No. Any members of the public that have any questions? Dylan?
Yes?
Dylan, uh, are there any members of the public who are raising their hand or wanting to chat about this application? Other questions or comments?
Negative unattended.
All right, very good. Mr. Bruno, it sounded like you kind of did a submission earlier on, but you're welcome to, or Mr. Manger, you're welcome to make any additional comments before we close the hearing and deliberate and then.
Justin, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Um, no, I appreciate, uh, your consideration.
Okay. I, I just like to say that, again, we, we do respectfully request the, um, the board act favorably on this as I think we've, um, we've done a good job, um, collaboratively, um, the Mangers and, and myself in coming up with a house that, that does not, um, that, that does not, that's not overbearing for, for the site. Um, we, uh, we do comply with all the other zoning regs, uh, included, including the height, um, and the, um, the, the amount of, um, like even if you look gross building area, um, within 140 feet of lot line, um, where it, um, you know, we're, we're permitted 35%, and we're at 23.6%. So I think that we're, that, uh, we've created a, or we, we, uh, we're in the process of creating a house here that does fit the, uh, the neighborhood quite, quite well while still, um, while, while still balancing the need for, for, you know, a modern family in 2020 to, um, and, and beyond to, um, to, to live. So I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. So the hearing is now closed and we'll open it up either for board member deliberation or motion.
I'd make a motion to approve, um, based on, um, the lot is undersized in area and with, um, there is a pre-existing condition, um, where the front yard is 25 feet and, um, uh, I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything else, but, um.
Matthew's motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. I don't want to add any.
All right, Greg. So he's got, uh, Matthew move and Greg second.
Couple of conditions I think you want to put into this one. First, or findings of fact, yes, it's a substandard lot. Also, it matches the frontage of the other homes or is even better than some of the front of the other homes because there's an unusual topographic condition on the property while those homes were built out front, that close to the road because of the topographic conditions to the rear on all those properties. And the other thing I think Diana would want to see in the resolution is that the garage roof will remain the way it is now and the garage will not be expanded upward or outward.
I agree.
Good addition. Thank you, Bruce.
Greg Brown?
Yes.
Just, well, well, can I just? I just got one question here that just, something doesn't make sense to me. Maybe we can get it answered so we go forward. I'm looking at the gross building area. And it's got 990 square feet existing. He's putting a second floor on that's bigger than 990 square feet, but the area doesn't double.
It's that extra room on the first floor is not getting built up over.
All right. That's, that's fine.
Thank you. You beat me to it.
It's hard for us to, I have a hard time seeing the screen and back and forth.
Yeah, no, I know it's difficult.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Dan.
So Greg Brown? Yes.
Yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Diana Rule?
Yes.
Matthew Bandow?
Yes.
Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
Chairman Allegra?
Mr. Mains, you're approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much for your time and thank you for the approval. Have a good night and, uh, this was a very, very smoothly run meeting, I have to tell you. I've been to a, been to a few of them and, and, uh, I, I know this is difficult for everyone, but thank you.
Thank you. From Hall No More, thank you very much for your time. Good, uh, point on the garage and noted, we're not gonna change it. Thank you very much for your considerations. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Dylan, can you please see if, uh, Mr. Jaden and the Brodor are on? I think I saw Roger earlier.
Edward Jaden?
Nope.
And. You know what the architect is?
Roger Schlicht.
Yes, they're on. Edward.
There, Joe, I'm gonna have to recuse myself.
Okay. We, we still have a call, right? One, two, three, four, five. We're still good. All right. Uh, Mr. J, can you confirm that you hear us and that we can hear you?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Hello, good evening. Mr. Schlicht?
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Anything wrong? All right, so this matter is, uh, Jaden and Kimberly Brodor, an application to construct a rear one-story addition which will result in a side yard setback of 14.5 feet where 23 feet is required at 58 Wildwood Road, block 1916, lot 5, in an R110 zone, carried from May 12th, uh, 2020 without further notice. Good evening.
Evening.
Who's gonna test, who's gonna testify this evening? Roger?
Yeah, I think both of us.
Well, you both raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
I do.
For the record, state your full name and address.
Ed, you can go first.
Edward Jaden, 58 Wildwood Road, Ridgewood, New Jersey, 07450.
Roger Schlicht, 56 Wallery Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey.
Mr. Schlicht has previously been qualified as an expert witness in the field of architecture for this board. Unless there's any questions by members of the board or members of the public, he could be qualified for that purpose this evening. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Being understood, Schlicht will be able to render an expert opinion in the field of architecture. Please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, the general concept of the project is to take down an existing breakfast bay that exists at the back of the existing home. Uh, we handed out, uh, distributed three photos. If you look at the rear photo of the house, you can see, um, a small extension that's considered the breakfast nook or acts as the breakfast nook now. Uh, that's the section of the home that we'd like to remove and then construct a one-story addition along the rear of the house, um, including the area that, of that existing breakfast room. We want to reconfigure it and reconstruct it because it is in, uh, substandard, uh, construction right now, the walls. Um, so by removing this pre-existing non-conforming condition and placing a structure back in that location, slightly different, I'll explain the differences, uh, we require a side yard setback variance. So if we can go to drawing V2, which is the plan, um, and also I had issued a diagram, um, that showed the existing footprint of the existing plan with a dash line that, uh, described the proposed addition. But in the design of the, um, addition, the only segment that we need a variance for is the rear section of the mudroom, and that's basically where the existing breakfast nook is. And as soon as we conform to the side yard setback, you can see the kitchen goes out further, about three foot three, and that's because now we're at a legal location off the side yard. And so we tried to minimize the impact by just rebuilding interior space where the existing breakfast, uh, nook is now. The only addition that we've proposed is a covered roof, and I'll show you that in the elevation in a moment, which would continue back an additional four foot nine. That's an open, um, uh, entry point with a slate landing. There's, there's really no height on the landing, it's about a step up, and then this roof that mimics the front portico of the Tudor. Other than that, everything to the left of the mudroom is compliant. Um, some things I'd like to point out in the elevation, if you look at the rear elevation. The existing breakfast room has a shed roof that starts low at the backyard and slopes up to the back wall. So you can see in the photograph, you have a triangular panel that faces the driveway, which is the side yard setback side. Our proposed addition, um, if you look at the rear elevation, has a gable roof that is centered on the mudroom door and has a, a timber type portico roof that's open structure that in my mind, uh, with the slope of the gable going away from the driveway, has less impact than a shed roof, which has actually a vertical wall at 12 feet, um, while the gutter line is much lower in our proposed design. And then it slopes back up to that window that you see in the rear elevation. Um, some other points, the, it is a one-story addition. It is 12 feet at that particular area at the peak of the gable, and then it runs underneath the existing windows at 12 feet, and then the highest point is the new breakfast nook, which is 14.3. So I guess my point is that it's a, it's a rather small, uh, or low height. It's not a two-story house, um, or an addition, um, against a rather tall, uh, existing home. So if we look at drawing V1. So we're requesting a side yard setback of 14.5 feet while 23 feet is required. Now the 23 feet is based on two-thirds the height of the building, and that's the main building. As you can see in the photographs, it's a tall Tudor house. Um, so that's, that's a setback, I think, that is more based on the two and a half story house versus the one-story addition that we're suggesting. If you were to take the addition on its own, being 12 feet off the property line, you take two-thirds of 12, we're compliant, but there is a minimum of 15 feet. Um, so if you just take the minimum, we're only about six inches, uh, of an encroachment versus the minimum side yard setback. Um, so we're no higher than what the existing is, and as I mentioned with the roof lines, I think the massing of it, uh, that, uh, helps with the impact. Um, the hardship here is a C1A. The lot is 100 feet while it's required to be 110. So we have a narrow lot, and then the other hardship is a C1C with a lawfully existing structure. Um, we're not over on lot coverage, gross building area, or improved lot coverage, so the house itself, the size of the house, um, is all compliant. If we had those additional 10 feet and the house was placed properly, we wouldn't need a variance for our, our proposed addition. So I feel it's a continuation of an existing condition and, um, it's all in the rear of the house, and, uh, so I feel it's no negative impact to the streetscape, and it's very consistent with what's there now. Um, so I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
So Roger, you are, the proposal is just to come in a little bit closer to the setback line than you currently are, right? From 14.9 to 14.5?
Yeah, the house is skewed. It's not parallel to the street. Um, so the front is, you know, a few inches to the east. So do, it's a, this, the wall is gonna be straight, so it's just the, uh, factor of the house being skewed to the property line.
Got it. So it's not the whole addition that's gonna be at 40, part of it.
Yeah, it's the, the mudroom. Where, where we're ripping down the breakfast nook, that, that run would be 14.5 feet versus the front of the house that's existing, that's 14.8 feet. So it's a matter of like two inches, I think.
You're not showing the, um, existing condition as being what you're knocking down, correct?
Not showing the existing condition. It's dashed, it's just underneath, it's an exact, it's underneath, uh, the hatched wall. You see where the back door comes in the mudroom?
Correct.
You can see some dash lines right in there. That's the breakfast wall.
I see.
And then the right side, the walls that are not hatched are existing, so we're aligning with the existing.
Understood.
Body of the house.
You're matching up with.
Sorry, Bruce, go ahead.
You're matching the existing body of the, of the, uh, the house.
Yes, the right side, the west side is aligning with the existing main body of the house.
Nothing further.
Anyone have any questions? Let's, uh, start. I don't know why people keep moving around on my screen, but Gary, it seems like you're, you're first now.
I am. I screen. I don't.
No questions? Uh, Matthew?
Sorry, uh, no questions right now, I don't, I don't think.
All right, uh, Dan. Dan, do you have any questions?
So I do have a question. So, uh, i- is the kitchen itself, uh, I see the hatched wall, there, so is the kitchen being extended?
Yes, once we, uh, conform to the required setback, the kitchen extends out further. So we don't need, we're compliant once that jog in the wall. That's actually how the plan was derived. As soon as we hit the 23, um, 23 feet, the kitchen went out further. So that we don't need a variance for the kitchen. It's just the back portion of the mudroom and the, and the reconstructing of the roof of the old breakfast room. We're gonna tear down the breakfast.
I, I was confused. I see, I see way back, now that you explained it, I see way back in the middle of the island was the old exterior wall.
Yes.
Right, I did, okay.
You could see a little bit of the breakfast dash line by the stove.
Okay. Okay, I understand. Thank you for your, uh, your answers.
No problem.
Yeah, finally, Greg, any questions?
Hi, Roger, just a quick one from a, um, from an exhibits perspective. I, I'm looking at both photos.pdf and photos2.pdf. That I got somehow, and I see dormers in photos2.pdf in the roof line, but no dormers in photos.pdf.
Yeah, the three photos I have have dormers. Um, these are the most recent, um, photos I took this, this spring. The other photos I don't have in front of me, but it's probably before they renovated the attic.
And I, so I'm assuming we have all the building permits for the attic renovation, whenever that took place? Do we know when that took place?
There's an open permit on the front of the house and the interior, uh, front of the house, the powder room and bathroom, and there were drawings issued years ago for the, um, for the attic, I believe. I'm not sure how long ago. I can, I can check.
Okay, that was my only question. I was just confused with two sets of photos. One has an awning too, one doesn't. Yours don't have an awning over that main window. Yeah.
The ones that do not have, the, the, the ones that do not have the fabric awning are the most recent. That's the condition.
Right, so. So is the, so with the fact that I'm seeing photos that have dormers and photos that don't, I'm assuming that if there's livable space on the, in that attic, that's been included in your calculations?
Yeah, if you look at drawing, uh, V1, um, there's a 320 square feet included in the GBA with ceiling heights seven feet or more, and, um.
Attic, yeah, 320.
Yeah, we're below, you know, we're, we're below the max on both the total lot and the half, and 140, 175 feet. Uh, but I do include the attic.
All right, so those dormers would be, you've included whatever space in there is over seven.
Yes.
Dorm, dormers aren't seven feet, or you've included it if they are.
Yeah, it's a, so sloping, it's a, it's a, almost 100% sloping ceilings up there.
Okay. My last question, thank you.
All right, thanks, Craig. Any members of the public that have any questions? Dylan, do you see anyone? Or frankly, if you've commented, I also.
I'm showing no comments. And I'm showing no members raising, no attendees raising their hands.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schlicht, closing remarks, additional testimony?
Well, thank you for your time. I just, I do believe that, you know, the hardships are there, the narrow lot and the existing location of the legal house. That we're not making any condition worse. Um, and all, all other parts of the zoning ordinance are met, so, um, I feel that it's an appropriate application for approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, meeting is now closed. Open up for deliberation and/or a motion. Anyone?
I'll make a motion. To approve as presented. I think the, uh, infraction of the zoning was the minimus, and it, uh, was just by the original location of the house, really. So not much you can do with.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second, this is Matt.
Greg Brown?
Uh, yes.
Gary Negrits?
Yes.
Matthew Bandow?
Yes.
Daniel Perlman?
Yes.
Chairman Allegra?
Yes. All right, that's everyone. You are approved, Mr. Jaden. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. So Dylan, can you please see if, um, the hills are on? John and Allison Hills?
Yes.
They don't have an architect, I don't believe.
Yes, we're here.
Miss Hill, hi, do you have, um, an architect or an attorney representing you, or are you representing yourself?
We have both. We have an architect and a, and an attorney on as well.
Okay, so who, who's the, let's start with the attorney. Who's the attorney?
Dave Malin.
Hi.
Mr. Malin, can you, uh, just let us know that you hear us and then confirm we can hear you?
I confirm I can hear you.
Great. And then, Miss Hill, your architect is?
Kenya Lama?
And Ron.
And Ron.
And are they on?
Formactive, I think, formactive architecture?
Yes.
Okay, they're all on.
Can you, all right.
Good evening.
So everyone's, everyone's here. Good evening. Um, this is the matter of John and Allison Hills, an application to construct an addition uncovered front porch which resulted in a front yard setback of 34.7 feet where 45 feet is required at 317 Downstreet, block 3202, lot 26, in an R2 zone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, uh, those who are going to testify, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
For the record, each one of you, please state your full name and your address.
Um, Allison Hills, three seventeen Downstreet, Ridgewood, New Jersey, oh-seven-four-five-oh.
And John Hills is here as well, three seventeen Downstreet, Ridgewood, New Jersey, zero-seven-four-five-zero.
And I believe, uh, Ron Eng from Formactive will be testifying as well.
That's right, so, yeah, it's Ron Eng, uh, offices Formactive Architects, we're eighty-two John Street in Brooklyn.
And thank you, ladies and, uh, gentlemen of the board and board professional. This is
Questions for the architect, Mr. May. Uh, you want to qualify your architect?
Uh, certainly. If, uh, I had a few opening statements, if you want me to qualify him first, I'd be happy.
I'm sorry, go ahead with the opening statement. Go ahead.
Not a problem. I just want to first thank the board for its time tonight and, uh, seeing us, uh, under these unusual circumstances. Uh, but we're here for the application of John and Allison Hills, who will be testifying first, uh, in connection with the application, and next, I will be bringing forth, uh, the architect. The project is seeking approval of a variance to approve a addition to the existing single-family home and related improvements, including a second floor addition and a covered front porch. Uh, currently, it's a one-and-a-half-story, uh, cape, and we're seeking, uh, the one variance in connection with that, and that is a front yard variance. There does exist on the property a sixty-foot width where seventy-five feet is required. We believe this is a hardship that, uh, would necessitate or give you the basis to grant the C variance in connection with this. Um, although we are looking for a front yard setback, uh, we believe it can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, as will be testified to by the architect as well, and will not substantially impair the intent or purpose of this. The application, as will be testified, is well below the lot coverage and gross building area, uh, and we're simply looking to expand it for the purpose of the applicant themselves. With that being said, uh, I know it's somewhat informal. Normally, I would pre-mark the, the plans as A1 as an exhibit here tonight. Um, and that's seven sheets prepared by Formactive Architecture dated ten fifteen, two thousand and nineteen. And the second exhibits were the six photographs, which are hopefully circulated to the board as well, consisting of all sides of the, of subject property, as well as two street scape photos as well. With that being said, I would like to call the first, uh, witness, Allison Hills.
Hi, everyone. I just want to start by thanking everyone for being here tonight and listening to this. Um, just to give a little background as to why we, uh, are seeking this variance. I grew up in the area, and my husband and I moved back to the area, um, two years ago with our kids in June twenty eighteen. And we are now looking to make some improvements on the home to accommodate our growing family, for us to be able to stay here for the long term. Um, we love the community here, we're close to the schools, um, the train as well. Uh, so what we're looking to do for the second floor addition, um, in order to put enough bedrooms up there for us to be on the same level as our, our young kids. Um, and then specifically for the variance and the front porch, the reason for that, um, one, to fit with the design of the house that we worked with the architect on, um, as well as having, um, a safe, convenient place for us to get the kids in the door somewhere well-lit, um, and safe from the elements, as well as our, you know, our kids are playing out in the front all the time with neighbors, so for us to have somewhere in the front where we can be with them and stay out there, it would be, uh, extremely important for us as well. So thanks again for listening to all this tonight.
With that being said, if you have any questions of the applicant directly, if not, I can proceed with testimony from the architect.
Anyone? I think you're free to proceed, Mr. Mayland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with that, I'd like to call, uh, Formactive Architecture, Ron Eng, uh, appearing.
Uh, good evening, to the board. So what I'd like to point out is that the existing condition there is
Before you begin, let me just, before you begin, let me just ask you a few questions to qualify you before this board and Mr. Whitaker, if I may.
Sure.
Can you, I know you stated when you were being sworn in, but can you state your name and business address, uh, as well as your occupation?
No problem. The, the name is Ron Eng, E-N-G. Uh, the company is Formactive Architecture. Uh, we're located eighty-two John Street in Brooklyn, New York, one-one-two-zero-one. Uh, I'm licensed in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. Uh, the practice is about twenty years old and has about a dozen people. Hopefully, we'll continue that way.
And what is, uh, your professional and educational background as well for the board's benefit?
Uh, I've been registered, uh, for approximately twenty, what is this, twenty-three years? The, the, I went to, I have my undergrad and graduate degrees from MIT. I got my license in ninety-seven, ninety-eight. So, uh, rest of probably in New Jersey, maybe six years ago, seven years ago.
And have you appeared before zoning boards or planning boards such as these in the past?
Many, more than I can count.
Uh, can you name, uh, some of the towns and municipalities that you have, and, uh, then I would submit the questions to the board as to his qualifications as an expert in architecture?
We, we've done a great deal of work in Hoboken with, uh, Fields and, um, the Fisher Brothers. But a lot, the bulk of our work is in New York, so, uh, we do a lot of, uh, zoning work and expert work in, in, in the city proper. You know, the work we do in Pennsylvania is mostly focused in, um, uh, near Carnegie Mellon and, uh, some of these areas in Pittsburgh.
Any questions by board members or members of the public in connection with Mr. Eng's qualifications as a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey?
No.
Any questions from members of the public?
I'm showing none.
There being, um, Mr. Eng will be so qualified in the field of architecture and on that basis can render an opinion in that field. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Um, can you please, uh, take a look at what I previously marked as A1? Those are the plans, uh, numbered one through seven that are dated ten fifteen, two thousand and nineteen. Did your firm prepare these plans?
Yes.
And can you please explain in detail to the board the nature of that application, specifically as it relates to the site plan and the location of the front yard setback and the variance requested?
So specifically, the, there is a, uh, an addition to the second story, um, that's expanding it by about three hundred and fifty square feet. The focus of the variance is in this covered porch area, that the existing condition, the existing house that is on a narrow lot, is, uh, existing non-compliant in that the front is already at thirty-nine and a half feet back, well, the requirement being forty-five feet. So the thirty-nine and a half feet is, as an existing condition, so in truth, the, the increase to the non-compliance, just with the porch only, porch and the step, and the steps, is less than five, is, uh, less than five feet. So that's, yes, go ahead.
I believe it's four point eight, as indicated on the, on the plans as well. And the existing conditions, the width of the lot is sixty or seventy-five is required, is that correct?
Correct.
And then with regard to the plans themselves, the floor plans, what is the applicant looking to do? I know they said they wanted to expand it for their family, but if you can just give a brief overview for the board's benefit?
The existing second floor is, is two bedrooms. It will become four bedrooms. Uh, there is the existing additional bathroom, and beyond that, there's some cladding differences. There's a new roof line. But basically, the existing footprint is being extended up, uh, and you'll have a new hip and a new gable. The, uh, the porch is covered, but it's, it's also has a, a very slight pitch, and it has a, a soft hip at one end.
And would you say that the, the porch and the improvements as depicted on the plans, do these fit in with the nature and character of the surrounding houses and, uh, neighborhood?
Yeah, we believe this is a very appropriate, uh, that there's a, a great deal precedent for covered porches. And we think that, uh, the size and scale are, and the treatment are appropriate to the neighborhood.
And in fact, uh, one of the adjoining properties has a, a covered porch as well, albeit layout than ours, correct?
Yes, just adjacent, yeah.
And you see any detriment to the zoning plan or to the surrounding property orders if this plan was going to be approved as presented to the board here tonight?
We do not see any detriment. We think this is a, an appropriate.
And, uh, the design from the street, and I direct the board to the, the street scape photos as well, do you believe this will fit into the nature and character of the street itself, and you are, again, trying to work with the existing building and its location currently, correct?
Correct.
So, we're not knocking down the, the house or anything like that. We're keeping the existing footprint and just trying to provide for the family, uh,
That's correct. Uh, we, you know, we, we see the porch in addition to be a, a, a proper architectural element. We see it as a, as a sign of, as a safety, an appropriateness for weather, things of that nature. So we think this is a, uh, will help the family and its use of the house.
And looking at the zoning table on, uh, the first page of A1, it does appear that all other aspects of the application do conform with the zoning ordinance in effect. It's well below the max coverage and gross building area. Can you just walk us through those numbers as well?
That's correct. All the, the gross building areas are correct. The coverage is correct. I think all the other setbacks that are required, the height will stay within the, the thirty-foot required. Uh, I think it's a foot below, it's twenty-nine feet. Beyond that, the, the, the actual square footage addition is fairly modest.
And even the gross building area, uh, itself, it's a modest home, it's approximately twenty-one-hundred square feet, appears twenty-one-eighteen to be exact, is that correct?
Twenty-one-eighteen is correct.
So it's really just expanding that one-and-a-half-story cape to make full bedrooms on the second floor and, and provide safe entrance and, uh, ingress and ingress to the house, correct?
Yep, that is correct.
With that being said, I would submit to the board if they have any questions directly of the architect or the applicant in connection with the presentation.
I just have one question, just to confirm. So the existing, the existing front yard setback is, uh, non-compliant at thirty-nine point five feet, and you're proposing, um, to go to thirty-four point seven feet, which is a difference of four point eight feet. Just to confirm that, the entirety of four point eight feet is the front porch, correct?
Correct.
Alright. Um, I don't have any additional questions. Let's just go down the road here. Uh, we'll go counterclockwise this time. Greg, you're up. Any questions?
Just a quick question on the, uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman, on the front porch side of it. Where you said that one of the, I'm just looking at your photos, one of the adjoining properties has a similar front porch. Did I hear you correctly?
Right, is it, uh,
Is that?
The address on this?
It's three-eleven. They have a covered front, um, covered front steps.
Well, they have a covered front steps.
Yeah.
But they technically don't have a, what you would describe, porch.
Right, not the side porch, just the front.
Right, and when you, and, uh, once again, in your opinion, based on the, for the architect, based on the street scape, you feel that, you know, going up the, you know, adding the story and also adding in this larger front porch is appropriate to the street scape that you have going there?
Uh, we do. I mean, there's some, there's a fair amount of variation on the street. As you go down downs, you have some, some second stories that are considerable with actually some right, some, uh, inclined roofs that certainly exceed the thirty feet currently. Uh, but we think that this is carrying the existing facade and the nature of the facade up, up in its current form.
And that front porch is currently, would be a hundred and sixty?
Hundred and fifty-eight square feet is what we show.
Right. Okay, no additional questions right now.
Thank you. Um, Dan, any questions?
Yeah, so is, is, do we have, uh, any understanding of what the average setback is on the street currently?
Adjacent properties, uh, we don't have that available to me.
Do you know, testifying tonight, whether they are, uh, conforming, non-conforming, larger, less than the, than the application?
No, we don't. We have surveys of our own property. It's, it's
Could certainly provide that if the, the boards are requested. If you, if you do take a look at the, the photo I believe that you're referring to as well, that shows, uh, the adjacent houses as well, and, um, the, the front steps here, it, it certainly appears that it goes, uh, contiguous with the, the other properties as well.
Okay, thank you. Do, well, let me ask this. So you talk about the covered porch next stories, does that, is that closer to or further from the street than the application here?
You know, we haven't surveyed that house, so we don't know exactly. I mean, it appears, when I looked at street view, and I scanned that, it appears to be projecting from the house. But I, I really would not ascertain, I, you know, not being a surveyor, I would not, not want to know where the lot line is relative to the front porch.
The board is used to, uh, opinions and testimony and, and information provided when you're infringing in a front yard setback. Uh, you've testified that, um, you thought it was beneficial to quote "street scape" as to what the street scape is. So for basis and foundation of your net opinion, um, what generally is done, and we even had it earlier tonight in another one, another, uh, application, uh, where there were measurements taken, and this was shown, when it was shown that this was similar to, or not as much of an infringement as others along that side of a street. So I think that's a very important element for the board that needs to consider when you're talking about infringing further in a non-conforming front yard setback.
Okay, that's fair. That's information we can seek.
No other questions for me?
We can certainly, if the board's so inclined, we potentially could carry this application so that we can provide that information. Additionally, the, the architect and applicant also stated, uh, depending on what the buffering or the, the front yard itself, the way it looks like now, obviously, there's a telephone pole directly in the front. Potentially put some plantings or what have you in connection with that front porch as well, which we'd be happy to provide and, and show on the plan.
Thank you. Diana, questions?
Yes, um, quick question. What is the width of the front of the house?
Uh, what is the front of the house? The, that's, hold on, let me pull that up.
Like I said, working on the screens is a little harder for me.
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of screens open myself. Hold on, let me, let me do the math. Thirty-four feet. The width of the front of the house, thirty-four feet.
Yeah, and, alright, um, the, the house is twenty-nine and a half feet tall.
Proposed.
Yes, um, I know you're asking for a front porch-only variance, but it sort of all ties in together for me. That, you look at the house, and it's a ton of roof. When you're looking at it, you're looking at that front porch roof, and you're looking at, it, it's, it looks like it's a steep pitch roof, and you've got windows on the front side, back on that, I don't know if the third floor is included, but you've got full windows on that third floor. It just, for the width of the house, the height of the house.
So there's no third floor. There is no third floor. Um, there are windows in, in the gable ends, um, that are part of the, uh, in the cathedral ceilings for the various rooms.
So are all the rooms on the, on the upper, I guess my question is, if you're thirty feet, four feet wide, you're thirty feet high essentially, you're twenty-nine and a half, thirty.
At the ridge, at the ridge.
Yeah, at the ridge. It just, and you have the, you have an additional roof for the porch. Is there a possibility to lower that? Is there a possibility to lower that roof line? And also because the only other house that I looked at, that you can see that has a super steep roof is more of a Tudor kind of house. And your house isn't that wide, so you have a really steep pitched roof and a lot of roof. And a lot of roof now with the front porch.
It's a nine rise 12, I mean, it's not terrible, it's, you know, it's not a 45 degree roof.
No, but you're, how wide is the house? The, I mean, for the, for the width of the house and the width of the house and the height of the house, it's a steep pitched roof. And then again, now you're asking for more roof in the front of the house for the porch. And also, just when you guys, other, other members of the board were asking, the second story is going up over half the porch where before it was not. So your second floor is exacerbating the front, the front setback more than previously.
I'm not sure if I follow. It's exacerbating in that.
The second floor, above, the way your house is now.
Yes.
You, you have that little entryway.
Yes.
But there's no second floor above it.
Correct. Well, there's, there's a gable end.
Or, the whole second floor above the doorway is pushed out a number of feet into the setback.
Right, that is the existing, that's the existing condition.
I understand, but previously it's not existing because it wasn't there. Now you're, 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 you're going, you still have to ask for the variance, even if you didn't put the porch, you would still have to ask for the variance for going up in a setback that's.
Understood.
Correct.
So I just, when we're, when Dan was talking about protruding forward, we're not just talking about a one story protruding forward. Now it's a two story protruding into the setback.
Yeah, understood. That's really for efficiency as a balloon frame condition, we were going to keep the framing. We wouldn't want to have an eccentricity on the front framing. So, you know, you could pull it back to, but this would be detrimental to the kind of look of the house.
No, no, it's just, I wanted to clarify that that.
Yes, you are correct.
Like I said, I just, for me, I feel that there's a significant portion of roof in the front of the house. When I'm looking at that house, I see 10 feet of roof on the third floor and then another four feet of roof on the porch. I, I just find it a little bit overwhelming of roof lines of.
I guess, you know, when I'm looking at the elevations, if, on page five, the elevations.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
So you're considering the, I mean, the inclined plane.
On the front, front elevation.
I mean, one thing we could do, we could provide a model, if you'd like a three dimensional model.
Or, or could you lower the roof line to where the peak is of the front of, above the porch? Above the, you have a center peak.
Yeah, so, so we could, look, it's a cathedral ceiling, it's, it's based on a, on a standard pitch. We can talk to John Allison about taking that ridge line down and thinking a different pitch. This could be a discussion.
Yeah, it just, like I said, it's just so much roof. It's window roof, window roof.
Yeah.
To me, and I'm just voicing my opinion of when I'm looking at the house. So the possibility it could lower the ridge. Okay, thank you.
And I think next is Dan.
I think I, I asked, the question I had about prevailing setback was answered.
That's right, so I'm going the other way. Greg? Any questions, Greg?
No, I, I started the conversation around the porches. So I think maybe we're missing Matt and Karen.
Sure, I only have one, one question. Are the applicants okay with stipulating that the, that the front porch will, will not be covered? Or sorry, screened in or anything at any point?
Yes, we, we agree to that.
Got it, thank you.
And Gary reminded.
Or whatever.
Hello? Hello? Hey, Gary. All right, questions from Gary? I gotta do.
Hello, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can anybody hear me? What is wrong with this?
Gary, we can hear you.
You can hear?
We can hear you, Gary.
Tell me you can hear me, that's all. I just want to point out that that's a 40 foot wide street, which means they owe us a 45 foot setback. So you give them 34 nine, you're giving them over 10 feet. So think about that. That's a push. And there's no sidewalks on that street, but there will be, and when they do that, they're going to put a sidewalk in and a curb. And that front porch is going to be sitting on top of the sidewalk. I think it's, if the street was 50 feet wide, you'd be looking at a five foot intrusion on the setback. But you're not. You're looking at a 10 foot intrusion on the setback. I also agree with Diana that, you know, a 912 pitch works on a cape that's only one and a half stories, because it gives it some character. You throw a second floor on there, probably a 612 is more than enough, which would lower that peak three feet, bring it down to 26 on the front. The back is a little different, but in any case, just generally speaking, I think those are issues that the board should be considering.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any members of the public who have questions for the architect?
I'm showing no hands raised. Wait, add one, one. There you go.
Hi, can I make a comment and not ask a question?
Well, let's pause for one second.
Okay.
Dylan, is that the only person, member of the public that raised their hand or asked to speak?
Yes.
Alright, so now we will move on and if there are any members of the public who have any comments.
Sorry.
We could, we could go now. So Ms. Corcoran, why don't you go ahead and make your comment?
Okay, um, I, just to let you know.
Need to be sworn in if it's not a question by law. So let's just do it. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give would be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give your full name and address.
Kate Corcoran, 337 Downs Street, Ridgewood, New Jersey, 07450.
Thank you.
Um, we just wanted to comment because we live about three or four houses down the street from Ally and John. And Ally and John's house is adorable. It's, it's small and much smaller than some of the ones that have been built up around it. And I know that their plan not to expand the footprint of their house, you know, means that it's not going to be as big as some of the other things that we've seen go up around here. I think that it's a good thing for the neighborhood to have houses start to kind of take on a little bit of charm with something like a front porch. Additionally, you mentioned sidewalks. We do not have sidewalks on our street. And you also mentioned the narrowness of our street, which exactly where Ally and John live, the street is narrower than it really needs to be because there is a huge tree blocking part of the roadway and the property across the street. So that's just something else that I wanted to mention. But as their neighbors, we support this. We think that it'll be something good for our neighborhood. We hope you take that into consideration. And we speak for some other people around us also. I know I can't technically, but we did.
Yeah, well, yes, you're right, you can't, but thank you very much.
I just thought I'd throw that in there.
Alright, are there any other members of the public who have any comments?
I'm showing no other hands.
Okay, Mr. Mailand, additional witnesses?
I do not have any additional witnesses here tonight. I, I know that I'll discuss the comments of the board with the applicant and the concerns with regards to the roof ridge, as well as the stipulation on the not to enclose a porch that certainly would be agreeable to my client. That being said, I think we might want to discuss internally to incorporate some of those conditions into the plan. Unless, of course, you would consider that out of vote and stipulate to approval based upon that. But I think we can go back and provide you with the information that you requested as well as trying to incorporate those comments into revised plans as well, if we could carry this.
Yeah, but before we do, just to be clear, I think there are a couple of other things. We want to make sure we, we get some sort of testimony regarding the streetscape, right? The other homes on the street where they are in regards to the setback.
Prevaling setbacks.
Yeah, the prevailing setbacks. I'm going to open up the board members. Any other comments or issues that you want to just make sure they take away so that when they come back, they've got a fully formed response? Alright, I think that, I mean, do you have any questions of us regarding what you've heard this evening before we carry this matter?
No, other than, like I said, I did, I believe my clients would be willing to stipulate, obviously, not enclosing the porch as well as the height of the roof, if that would be a reasonable condition imposed by the board. But if the board's not so inclined to take that vote and with those stipulations without receiving the streetscape survey, then I certainly understand and I'd leave it at the board's discretion with that.
Yeah, I think we're better off carrying the matter. Jane, what, what's the next possible meeting date that we have?
Okay.
Applicants are going to need to have revised plans in 10 days in advance of the hearing.
You can do that.
Alright, well, the next hearing would be June 9, but that would mean the plans would have to be in by Friday. Otherwise, we're going to June 23.
Okay, well, we could, we need to look at our schedule and see what we can get in terms of staffing. So this is a, can we let you know in a day?
Well. No, we have to carry it.
The announcement tonight.
So Friday, so we will have you, we will have revised, revised by Friday. The question is the streetscape study. This is.
I would say in abundance of caution, we should carry it to June 23 so that we can
Okay.
properly revise and approve by the client and provide you the streetscape study that, that the board seeking.
Okay, that's, that's probably more reasonable.
Right, that's Tuesday, June 23. We're still doing 7:30, right? We haven't decided to move any meetings earlier than the normal time, correct, Jane?
We have one on June 1 and June 9, that's for sure.
What, what date are we carrying this one to?
June 23, June 23.
June 23, okay. At 7:30 PM, Zoom link to be provided, no further notice required.
Okay, we, we will. We'll have marked it on the calendar.
Alright, thank you very much.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you for the time and consideration.
Okay. Like I stated earlier, the Burna matters being carried if anybody is on waiting for Benjamin and Jamie Burna. 454 Wasden Terrace, that is being carried to June 1 at 7:30 PM, no additional notice required. Dylan, can you please let us know if Matthew Devens is on?
I do not see. No.
Yeah, he's not on, but Tim, we don't, we don't need him on, right?
No, we don't. I told him he didn't, I told him he didn't have to be there.
Okay, let me just pull this up. This is the one I can't find. What, what date of the letter, email with the letter?
The date of the request was?
The date of the, of your email?
Okay, um, May 8. Is the date of the letter. And I had a copy of the resolution there. It would have been in the email on Wednesday, I think.
Okay, yeah, so this was in your email, yeah, May 20. Alright, so Mr. Devon sent in a letter dated May 8, 2020, saying the variance approved for my home at 39 Park Slope is due to expire May 28. And as a result of, I guess, COVID, respectfully requested one year extension to the expiration date of that variance. And that was for?
May 28 was.
Yeah. Alright, you know, we usually grant these, and I think it's always for another year. It seems appropriate to me, especially in consideration with, you know, it's very possible that Corona had something to do with this, with, you know, being unable to begin work during the required time. So does anybody have any, any issues or any objections to an extension? No? Alright, so I make a motion to extend the variance for Matthew Devens at 39 Park Slope, Richard, for another year. You have a second?
Second.
Alright, Matthew?
Okay, so Chairman Allegra?
Yes.
Diana Rule?
You're on mute.
Diana Rule?
Sorry, yes.
Gary Negritz?
Yes.
And Matthew Bandell?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, great. I don't think it went terribly. Not bad, right? I mean, Bruce, you've, you've done these now, I guess, with other towns. What did we do wrong? What can we do better?
I think every once in a while, for the purposes of the record, just identify yourself. We know your voice, we see you, but identify yourself saying this is, give your name when you make comments or make questions. Just probably helpful for everyone. But other than that, you did very well. Very well compared to some that I have been involved with.
And this is the perfect length of meeting.
Yes.
9:30, 9:30. We did say that, right? We said we wanted a two hour meeting.
Diana Rule was out there at 9:30. She said that, so it's Diana Rule.
I'm done.
The rule, rule.
That's the rule, yes.
We can pay attention for two hours and that's it.
Yeah, I, I think the real key, the real key to it, folks, again, and Jane's very helpful with this, is putting them in order and selecting what we have as far as the style of application. So if we see something that's more, more, not even controversial, that's the word that's always being used, but if it's something that has a lot more requests being made, that might need to take up two time slots if we're looking at four or five in a given evening. So we manage it that way. So Jane, we have some carries over now till Monday, next Monday, right?
Yeah, I think there's only one for Monday, the one that was carried from tonight.
Okay.
So. Otherwise, we're on June 9.
Very good.
Okay.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright, great.
Have a good evening.
Enjoy the rest of your night. Take, take care, everyone.
Take care, guys. Bye.
Thanks, Dylan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dylan.